All right.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 9th, 2023 Winchester Select Board Meeting. Our second Select Board meeting of the 2023 year. I want to thank my colleagues who are with me tonight. Anthea Brady, Vice Chair, John Fallon, and Michael Betancourt. Armani Alguillo could not make it this evening. But, you know, I want to first thank my colleagues and Beth Rudolph for meeting on Saturday for a budget summit. I think it was a productive couple hours just to get started on the FY '24 budget and some financial planning. So, thanks, everyone, for giving up your weekend. I know that was not convenient for everyone, but I think it was helpful. So, with that, we can begin with the acceptance of some donations.
We accept with gratitude a donation of $2,500 from the Johnston family to the Winchester Fire Department to be deposited into the Fire Department gift account.
All those in favor?
All right.
We accept with gratitude $103,712 from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection through its electric vehicle incentive program to the town for the purchase of direct current fast EV charging stations.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we accept with gratitude two ARPA stabilization grants to the Recreation Department, And we accept with gratitude two ARPA stabilization grants to the Recreation Department, January dispersment, in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents to be used for the RAP kid connection, and the other in the amount of five thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents to be used for the Lynch Acker School program.
All those in favor? Beth, is the EV charging station, is that for the Jenk slot or is that something different?
Yeah, no, that's for the Jenk slot.
That's great. Okay, next up, we'll go to Beth's report.
Sure. So first up, I have an appointment. So in accordance with section two, sorry, excuse me, four dash two B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time promotional appointment in the Department of Public Works Transfer Station General Foreman of Timothy Miara from Tewksbury to Transfer Station General Foreman. And I respectfully requested the board waive the fifteen-day appointment period.
Is there a motion?
I move that we waive the fifteen-day appointment period to appoint Timothy Miara to the DPW Transfer Station General Foreman.
All those in favor?
Thank you. A few other updates. So happy to report, thanks to all the voters who came out on Saturday, the Lynch School override did pass on Saturday. So we also happy to report that in late December, the MSBA did revisit our facilities grant, and they increased the grant from approximately seventeen million dollars to almost twenty million dollars, which means increase of just two point nine million dollars. So the maximum borrowing can be reduced to seventy-four point five million dollars for that project. So thanks to MSB for the additional funding towards that important school project.
Yeah, I think it's also worth thanking Mary Ellen and the clerk staff.
Definitely.
And the high school volunteers that were there on Saturday. I thought the election went very smoothly. Everyone seemed to be in an upbeat mood, maybe because the sun had finally come out after five days. But I think it was a, you know, well-attended community event, a good turnout for January Saturday. And, you know, Mary Ellen's staff works extremely hard to put those on. So we're very much appreciative of all their hard work and doing that.
Speaking of elections, our next annual election is scheduled for Saturday, March eighteenth. And voters who are interested in pulling papers for public office can stop by the town clerk's office. The deadline to pull nomination papers is Wednesday, January twenty-fifth. And there's more information on the town's website about how to run for public office. A few weeks ago, Brian, our town planner, Brian Zekely was in, and Brian, for everybody's information, has, is no longer with the town, so his last day was Friday. But we did secure a technical assistance grant from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership to assist us with drafting the zoning language that we talked about at the prior meeting to bring us into compliance with the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning Requirement. We had a kind of a preliminary meeting last week, and there's been a small working group that's been put together to move forward with that initiative, consisting of myself, two Planning Board members, Town Council, John Serbiere from the Housing Partnership Board, and the group would like to invite a representative from the Select Board to participate as well. And the first meeting is scheduled with our consultant for Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, if there's any interest in participating.
Yeah, so is anyone interested in becoming a part of this working group? The first meeting is January twenty-fifth at eleven AM. It's what Brian's been presenting to us a couple of times. And now we're working with Jennifer Goldstein, who some of you know. And, you know, it'd be great to have some Select Board representation on there if anyone can make themselves available to be a part of it. Don't all jump at once.
So which one is this again? This is the?
The MBTA zoning, the, the housing, the?
Yeah, I'm happy to help out with that one, I guess.
Thanks, Mike.
Just a couple other updates. The town, happy to report the town was recently notified that we received an award of approximately eighty-four thousand dollars from the Green Communities Grant Program. So this grant will support improvements at the Mystic School where the Recreation Department is housed and the Parker School as well. More information to be coming on that. Our spring town meeting schedule, the town meeting warrant closes on Friday, March seventeenth, and the first night of town meeting is scheduled for Monday, April twenty-fourth.
Get those warrants in before you celebrate Patrick's Day.
And just, there's a few construction updates. Not too much going around, going on around town. Eversource is still out working on Cross Street as weather permits. The Main Street Bridge drilling project is on hold until we receive our precast bridge caps, which we hope to be delivered by the end of January, and then we'll see where the weather is then. We might be able to do some work over the next few months. North reservoir dam construction is continuing as long as the good weather holds, and we expect them to be wrapping up this spring. Transfer station renovation, we're hoping to have the demolition of the incinerator building scheduled for February. The DPW fire alarm project is substantially complete. Morocco School roof project is ongoing and hope, we hope the work to be, hope for the work to be complete by March. And then upcoming projects for this spring is the Woodside at Wildwood, Woodside Road at Wildwood Street Construction, Morocco School Electrical, Parker Swing Space. We have put out the bids for the modular classrooms. That work will start this summer to make the site ready for the school, for the students to move in in the spring, in September. And then we have a few other projects that were approved at fall town meeting that we're moving forward with, getting bid documents together.
Any questions for Beth? I see Nick here, so I'm gonna ask Nick, put you on the spot. Did, when is the recycling, the new recycling area supposed to open up?
Seber has committed to April-ish.
April-ish? Sounds good. It's coming along nice.
Yep.
Great. All right, hearing no questions at this point in our meeting, it's time for public comment. I invite members from the public to come up. Raise your hand if you have a public comment. I'll recognize you, ask you to join us at the table, state your name, state your address, and I'll give you three minutes to, up to three minutes, to speak about a topic that is on the agenda or something you've brought forward. So is there anyone here for public comment? Come up, sir.
For you. Thank you, Chairman Lucho, I was in the board. My name is Bob Trackamas. You have in front of you a petition letter that I wrote and got signed by seventy residents of the Forest Street. Yeah, Forest Street area, adjoining streets like Chisholm Road, Polk Road, and Forest Circle. My wife, she's nine, with one eighty-one Forest Street. She's lived there since nineteen eighty. And retired, as are many residents on Forest Street, of being apprehensive every time we leave our driveway to go on the Forest Street, worried about, am I gonna be hit by a speeding car that's coming around a curve? Same thing with walking along Forest Street when we go around curves, is there gonna be a car that's gonna jump the curb and come after us? It's happened many times along Forest Street. And when we go in our driveways, we have cars that are coming, speeding down, tailgating us, honking at us, going into the opposite lane when we're waiting to turn into our driveways. And what I did on December twenty-sixth and for a week thereafter was I went up and down Forest Street. And I went to houses on Forest Street, Polk Road, Chisholm Road, Forest Circle. I first gave, whenever anybody answered, I first gave them a copy of the letter that you have in front of you. I asked them to read it, and if they agreed with the sentiments that were in there, I asked them to sign the petition. You have copies of their signatures there. All but two people that I approached enthusiastically signed the petition. There were seventy signatures there from residents in that area. Two people did not sign. One gentleman told me that speeding was not a problem on Forest Street, and he did not want to see any enforcement with speed limit under any circumstances. Another one said that he did not want any speed bumps or speed tables on Forest Street. Other than that, everybody else endorsed what I have in there. It's an epidemic of speeding up and down Forest Street. It's gonna take a concerted intensive effort in the future for a substantial period of time to change that culture on Forest Street right now. When I moved here in nineteen eighty, a neighbor across the street took me down to tennis courts. He said, Bob, he said, when you go by to tennis courts, watch your speed limit, because there's always a police car, or often a police car in the cutoff by where you park by Packer Courts. I was talking to my next-door neighbor, and he said, yeah, I grew up in Winchester. He said, when we left high school and we got our license first, we were told, never speed past the Packer Courts, because you're gonna get a ticket there. We need that type of culture on Forest Street. And it's gonna take enforcement by the police to get there. And it's not gonna be just an occasional, you know, pulling over somebody, as has been happening in the past, although not recently. But it's gonna take an intensive, concentrated effort by the police department to enforce what a reasonable speed is, a speed limit on Forest Street. I proposed certain other things in the letter that you have in front of you. I happen to think that speed tables work very well. Going down Holland Street, going into Davis Square in Somerville, over on Grove Street in Medford, I think the speed tables there that are advertised are very good and effective at getting people to reduce their speed. I know there's some opposition in this town to speed tables. Other things is, there's no crosswalk between the top of Forest Street and the bottom of Forest Street. You've got kids walking there to Morocco School. You've got people that try to cross the street, and there's, there's, there are no crosswalks there. There's no signage telling people to slow down, because people might be crossing the street there. I think the town can do something to try and slow the drivers down on Forest Street. I suggested speed tables. Reducing the speed limit from thirty to twenty-five is symbolic. It's gonna require enforcement to do anything, but at least it sends a message, I think, to drivers that we're serious about trying to reduce the speeding on Forest Street. Signage, flashing signs of some sort. They've got them up on Highland Avenue. Do they work? I don't know whether they work or not, but at least it gives the drivers some warning that they're exceeding the speed limit, and they're creating a danger there. And so those are the things that I proposed there. I hope that we can get something done to alleviate some of the concerns that we have when we drive up and down Forest Street and we exit our driveways all the time. The number of people that pass me and pass my wife when we try to slow down to turn into our driveways, that's amazing, they go in opposite lanes. We had a horrific accident there a month and a half ago at Laurel Hill and Forest Street. Other people that I talked to when I went up and down Forest Street told me about drivers that went into their yards, hitting fire hydrants, telephone poles, trees. One forty-six, the owners there told me a car came right in and almost hit their house. You know, speed is an issue, a big issue. And I would appreciate any help that you can give to alleviate that problem on Forest Street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for bringing this forward. Certainly, at the very least, as a start, we can certainly make the police know that we've received this. Maybe the chief can do some directed patrols over that area to start. But certainly something we need to consider. I know we have the transportation study coming out soon. I'm not sure, I haven't seen it yet, if there's anything in there, in this board order or not, or any recommendations, but certainly something that we can look into. And certainly maybe, you know, meet with the neighborhoods up there. I mean, I know people were, some of the residents of Highland Avenue were disappointed at what happened at town meeting in the fall concerning the project that we had there. It didn't pass by a small margin, so certainly an area that speed is a factor. You mentioned the serious accident a couple of weeks ago. Certainly lucky no one died. It was a car across the median.
They'd used laws of life to get somebody out of the car.
So, you know, scary things. So certainly well noted and certainly something we will look into.
Thank you. I did call the chief of police and left a message with the assistant chief, and I dropped a copy of this petition off with the police department before I came here tonight.
Okay, so we'll follow up on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about the Wolverines, too, they're not in tonight's game.
Whoa. Yes.
At least Ohio State did make it, though, right?
Ah, that's no consolation. Next year. Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you, sir. Anyone else here for public comment? All right, seeing no one else, we'll keep the agenda moving. So maybe we can watch some of the game. The, we do have a public licensing hearing at seven forty-five, so I'm gonna actually open that hearing. This is for the alcohol, the alcohol license for PPT Hospitality LLC, doing business as Puterin Thai at eight thirty-one Main Street. So I've been in contact with their attorney, and they asked for a continuance. They're looking to have this on the schedule for the Monday, February sixth meeting, Patty. So if we, unless anyone objects, can we continue that administratively to that date? Hearing no objection, we will do so. So I'll close that hearing, and we'll keep moving. Waterfield Lot, Civicco.
Sure.
Go ahead, Beth.
Thank you. So at the board's last meeting, Civicco was in to present kind of the pre-permitting set as required under the LDA. I reviewed it as town engineer, reviewed it with Brian Zekely, the town planner as well. There's a memo from Brian in your packet. A couple of things I just wanted to note. So we need to do a little bit more due diligence on the access to the buildings that they're, on Waterfield Lot, the delivery access to the rear of those buildings. So working with Town Council, we're reviewing kind of the layout there, and just need a little bit more time to finalize our recommendation there. A couple other things I just want to note, that the, evaluating kind of the sidewalk connection, stair connection to the buildings on the rear of Church Street as well. So there's currently, there's stairs that come down to the parking lot in the back there, so we need to do a little bit more work evaluating that. There's currently no water main on Waterfield Road in front of the site, so there's gonna need to be some work done to understand what that, what, how that building will be supplied adequate domestic and fire protection purposes to the site. And then finally, the town planner noted that the building height exceeds what's allowed under our typical special permit, and so the applicant would need to apply under the PUD special permit, which I believe the applicant was aware of. So I think we don't have any recommendations specifically for this evening. We'll hopefully bring it back to the next meeting with a recommendation, once these issues have been flushed out a little bit further.
So it's a complex lot. It's, you know, fitting a tight building in a tight area, so certainly I can understand staff needing a little bit more time to look at this. And certainly we'll have, just have to ask Civicco for an extension of time, hopefully that will give us. I don't think this is something we need extensive period of time, but, you know, a few weeks, maybe by our next meeting, we will have it resolved. So we'll keep everyone updated on that. Anyone have an issue with that?
Just, no, just really about the access to behind Dagostinos and, you know, is that wide enough to get? I know it's sort of the box truck versus the van, and, you know, sometimes you look at those plans, and on paper, it looks like it's gonna work, but practically it doesn't. So can we have a test run when we lay this thing out, like, before we agree to it, like, okay, this is actually gonna work?
Absolutely, we're gonna rent a box truck.
No, I'm just saying, but. We'll get one of Dagostinos' delivery guys to do it.
I saw you back, I saw you back out of Cross Street today. You're an expert.
I was a pro, right? But, no, but it's a legitimate point. It is, because once it's up, you can't fix it, and then, you know, Dagostinos, you know, and others there, we have a duty, you know, to protect their interests.
So in my, in my conversations with Civicco, just during this process, they've spent an enormous amount of time with this area of the building. I think this has been the most challenging part of it. So, but to your point, I agree. I think, you know, that can happen, so might as well get it right.
Yeah, that's all. I mean, Civicco's been great, and I'm not asking to do more than this fair.
So we'll keep working on that. We'll let you know, but hopefully by our next meeting, maybe we, we have some resolution. Anything else on that?
I think that's it.
Okay. Moving along to the transfer station commercial fees. Mike and Nick, you wanna come on up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Mike is our acting DPW director. Congratulations.
First hours on the job, it snowed.
Yep. First day.
He hasn't washed yet.
baptism by fire.
Totally it.
So.
Let Nick go, yeah.
We're, we were here, was, what was it, two weeks ago, talking about the recommendations from the Transfer Station Advisory Group. And we kind of went through some of the smaller recommendations, that, you know, the TVs, the propane tanks, the tires, the, the smaller items that we're actually losing money on. And we brought those up, so we are, in a break-even scenario on those. Talking to the board about the, the second half of the, the recommendations from the Transfer Station Advisory Group. But before I go through that, I just wanted to give some history on the commercial pricing and sticker pricing. So in twenty nineteen, the cost to tip at the transfer station for commercial waste was one oh five. January first, twenty twenty, there was a thirty-five dollar increase, largely to fund our new disposal contract going from Covanta to Wheel Up Raider. January first, twenty twenty-one, there was a ten dollar increase, so we went from one forty to one fifty. January first, twenty twenty-two, there was another ten dollar increase going from one fifty to one sixty. We are currently at one sixty a ton for commercial baggage trash. The stickers, calendar year. The stickers, calendar year, 2020, it was two thirty-five. A commercial sticker was two thirty, a smart sticker was fifty-five. And with the, the smart stickers, I'd like to put an asterisk that the average family was using fifty dollars worth of bags. Calendar year, 2021, the residential sticker was two seventy, the commercial sticker was two seventy, the smart sticker was seventy. So that represents a thirty-five, a forty, and a fifteen dollar increase. Calendar year, 2022, there was no increase on the residential sticker or commercial sticker, but the smart sticker was eliminated, essentially a seventy to two seventy increase. On that note, on page five of the Transfer Station Advisory Plan, the Transfer Station Advisory Group recommended a modest increase on the three main waste streams that we have of commercial construction debris, commercial mix, and commercial household and commercial businesses, a ten dollar increase on each of the, the streams. With that, I'll tee it up to Beth, and.
Sure. So, as you're aware, kind of the, the group kind of took a big picture approach at looking at different scenarios and kind of modeling the financial expectations at the transfer station. I think you all have a copy of the, the working group's report in your packet. So these recommendations were part of kind of the short-term recommendations at the transfer station. There's a series of longer-term recommendations that I think the board not necessarily take up this evening, but it should be part of kind of what we're thinking about going forward in terms of ways to increase revenue at the site from commercial vendors was one of the options we looked at, we kind of laid out two, in addition to kind of this initial ten dollar increase, kind of laid out longer-term increases, or ways in which we can increase the use of the site by different vendors, which I think is a kind of a conversation for another day, but should be part of kind of the overall package of how we look at the transportation fees. So the recommendation, short-term, is that we increase these fees by the ten dollars each, as Nick has, Nick had said, and we can evaluate whether, because according to our kind of financial model for, for FY twenty, FY twenty-three, and FY twenty-four, we're already kind of in a, at least a break-even standpoint with our revenues and expenses at the transportation. We can evaluate whether, as the board kind of talked about the last meeting, we want to put any of this additional revenue towards either reducing the, the capital fee for, for residents, or towards reducing the capital contribution towards the debt service on the transportation project.
And I should also add, calendar year twenty-three, there's a twenty-two dollar increase to two hundred and ninety-two dollars for residential and commercial vendors.
So we saw this presentation a couple weeks ago, I think, at this point, right? So I think we delayed voting on the commercial stuff in order so that people could digest these commercial fee increases.
I think you guys notified the commercial haulers, you know.
Did we get any, I, I mean, I haven't seen anything come across my desk in terms of.
We posted at the scale house.
Yeah, no, I get that, but I didn't know if anyone, if you have received any feedback or anything.
There's some commercial haulers here, if you'd like to reach out to the audience.
Okay. But we didn't get anything in our office.
I have not received anything directly, no, no.
What do people think of this? George, you were on the committee, weren't you?
I was on the committee, yeah. And, um, I, I own Winchester rubbish mobile and recycling, and Don, Gary, Johnson, and next to me, they own an Adam landscaping and rubbish mobile. No, with the, with the modest increase, I, I was on the committee, and that seemed pretty reasonable to me, considering the, the challenges that, you know, the expenses that we were facing.
Okay. All right. I think that was kind of the feedback, we're making sure, you know, no one had a hard time with this. I think it is modest. Obviously, we've got bigger pictures, stuff to look at, at the transfer station, and we're going to get into that, and I think in the next, you know, month or so.
Yeah, the only thing I'd say, Rich, is, you know, I'd, I'd rather us push the commercial fee a little bit higher and reduce the resident fee, and I, I don't know, I mean, are we, have we been losing resident permits? It seemed like we were above five thousand at one point, and now they're.
Uh, when we were do, when we, my, my history only goes so far back. But when we removed the smart permit, we only lost twenty stickers. And I think that was likely people who were exclusively using the transfer station for the swap shop, and who also probably additionally had a trash pickup.
So we've set the fees for the residential stickers for the upcoming year.
Yep.
So, I mean, from a long-term strategy, that might be something we're looking at, but I think in terms of.
Well, we have a large increase slated for next year.
Right, yeah, this is the concern, I mean, as I said before, it seems more like regressive taxation to me, where, you know, the people that are actually using less and costing us less are paying more. So when we had the smart sticker fee, certainly there are people that were ideologically aligned with the policy objective, but also, if they only had one bag of trash a week or a month, it made sense economically, right? You said you averaged fifty dollars in bags, and, you know, so instead of paying, you know, three hundred and fifty dollars, they're really paying as they threw, right? So it was, they'd save themselves a couple hundred and fifty dollars. So as the number goes up, we're probably going to push people, more people towards trash pickup, right, and for the commercial haulers, and that's going to, you know, cost us more. So I just want to make sure if we hit certain benchmarks and certain numbers of our permits are going down, our costs are going up, that, that, that is not felt by residents disproportionately, and certainly not by our seniors in single-family households and the members of the community that can't afford it. So, we hear a lot that residents feel nickel and dime every, you know, with, with water rates and excise, you know, tax fees, and if there's any way we can kind of mitigate that, I think that certainly for next year, we started this process last year to kind of get to a point where we were mitigating some of these cost impacts while renovating the transfer station, so kind of difficult to do at the same time, but I, I, I think we're just still treading water with what we need to do. So I, I'd rather see us hike the, the commercial rates higher and put a little less of the burden on, on residents. So, and, and maybe if we hike the commercial rates a little bit more this year, then maybe there'll be some retained earnings there that even next year will help us get, get a lower fee for residents, I don't know.
So, I, I think one thing that we need to decide as a board, and we're going to have this conversation, I think, in the next couple of weeks, is, you know, do we start investigating a pay-as-you-throw kind of method? And so I think, to your point, you know, we may reinvent how we, how we charge people for the transfer station to begin with. So I think before we do anything drastic like that, I would like us to have that conversation and decide which direction we're going there. And if we choose a direction that we're, no, we're not going to go in that pay-as-you-throw direction, then, you know, maybe it makes, it certainly makes sense to look at these fees, you know, a lot closer, but in terms of the working group's work, I mean, that was what they were tasked to do, so, I mean, I'd be inclined to follow their recommendations for this year, and then, you know, see, you know, some of this long-term financial planning that they've noted in this report that we really haven't even discussed yet. I think we need to get through that first.
So can we make a commitment to do an evaluation of the pay-as-you-throw if we're going to just kind of keep status quo and not, not make any changes? I mean, what, what does that involve?
I think that's a, I think that's a separate conversation for a separate day.
Yeah, we could invite Julia Green, who's the person we work with from STP, into the board at a future meeting. We, one of the recommendations from the working group is if, if we are serious about moving towards pay-as-you-throw is that we participate in their technical assistance program, which would help us evaluate the financial plan, should we move to a pay-as-you-throw program, and, and help us understand what that impact would be here.
So I think that's the idea, is to invite her to a meeting.
Yeah.
And, you know, have, have a discussion about that. I think we're looking at February to try to do that.
Okay.
Is this technical assistance grant something like we're going to get cracking on, Beth?
Well, I guess the question is, do, we probably want to have Julia come in first, I would think, to, to talk to us about it, and then, and then move forward.
Uh, babe, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was going to slightly change my question. Go. I, I was just going to ask for sort of a typical commercial user, if the, the fee is a hundred and sixty per ton, so I, I have no concept of volume and garbage. How much would, like, how much is that for a pickup truck? How much would that be for sort of a small garbage truck coming in, like, the increase by ten dollars a ton?
Uh, so, your typical, you know, F-150 is a, is a half-ton truck, so you'd be going from, if you.
Eighty, eighty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Garbage trucks, we've kind of got, run the gambit in town from one ton to five ton. So a ten dollar to a fifty dollar per truck increase.
Okay. So that, that's just hopeful for me to see the, the scale of that, because I think that does bring, to Mike's point, like, in some cases, that's, you know, a pickup truck with cha, uh, sort of five dollar increases, probably, you know, not necessarily cost prohibitive for someone who's doing more sort of commercial runs, potentially over time, it could be. So even if there's a way to evaluate down the road, really, is there a slightly more complex way to get a, a mix on that, that can increase some charges?
That's a question.
Yeah, I think it's a good point. But I think, I guess where I land on this is, if we're serious about pay-as-you-throw, I think we need to head down that direction, and then this is something different, so.
I think we can do both, you know, in the short term, we can kind of evaluate some different levels of increases for the, on the commercial side, and trigger a, you know, grant application for the pay-as-you-throw. I mean, I, I don't, you know, I think Julie does a great job, we've always had a good relationship with DEP, you know, I haven't heard a presentation yet, but I'm, you know, inclined to kind of move forward with that evaluation, otherwise, I mean, just to get it moving, sometimes it can take several months to get the process going, but I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, is it a roll, I can't remember, is it a rolling?
Yep. The technical assistance grant is eighty hours of Julia's time, if we commit eighty hours of our time. And they have all sorts of financial models that they would bring to the table as well.
So do you commit eighty hours of your time, Nick?
I think it's down to the.
See if we can get this done, yeah, no, I know, I know, I know. It, it is a factor, right, to, to see whether we have the staff support.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's, it's not just one person, right, it's between all of us, Lee, Anne, and, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so what do we want to do with these fees tonight? We have a recommendation from the Transfer Station Working Group of those fees that Nick mentioned, to potentially a ten dollar increase across the board.
I would also respectfully ask that we give the commercial haulers some time to not notify their clients as well. You know, it's not fair to say tomorrow, there's a ten dollar increase, you know, they need time to notify their customers.
Do you have a recommendation of how much then?
Could say February first or something like that, would that be reasonable?
Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
February first, reasonable for you?
Yeah, that gives people time to get out with it, with the billings, the notification, I think that's great.
Okay.
Okay, great, yeah.
So is, are we comfortable with moving forward with this, these recommendations at this point?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
By move, we increase the transfer station commercial tipping fees as follows, with construction debris increase from two hundred and twenty dollars to two hundred and thirty dollars per ton, commercial mix increase from one eighty-five to one ninety-five dollars per ton, and commercial household and business increase from one hundred, sixty dollars to a hundred and seventy dollars per ton.
Effective July first?
Effective.
Oh, sorry, February first. Very generous.
Just a friendly amendment, if I may, that, you know, we also agree to kind of trigger a pay-as-you-throw review, and maybe get some information from Julie in advance of our February meeting, where she would present, just so we can hit the ground running, and to see, you know, with staff if it's even, you know, plausible for us to put these hours in place, so.
That's fine. You accept that friendly amendment?
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, yes, so the, the, the motion with the amendment, as made by Mike.
Is there a second? Anybody?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All those in favor, I'll do that again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, hearing none, it passes.
If a scheduled meeting was Julia, Wednesday, I'll ask about her February.
So, yeah, so February sixth is the first meeting that we're, we have in February, so that would be great.
February sixth or February twenty-seventh, so if you come the sixth, it'll be.
I know.
Thanks, Nick, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Ten Converse Place, I see Ian's here, this team, come on up. Do you have a presentation for us, Patty? If you have this system up in.
Sneak in here for a second.
Sorry, sorry.
No, that's no problem.
Yep.
You've done that before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chair Murchie and Select Board. I'm Ian Gillespie from the Ten Converse Place Development Team, along with my partners, Jan Seembrugge and Paul Sutley, we didn't have a seat at the table for Paul, and Larry Beals of Beals Associates. We're following up on our meeting with you last February twenty-eighth regarding the town land between our site and Mill Pond. We have proposed improving the pond bank in a manner consistent with the Aborigonna Initiative, and this is a natural extension of our landscaping, and we are happy to pay for it and its installation. This work is within a resource area and requires a notice of intent filing with the Conservation Commission. Consistent with the board's direction last February, we have drafted the order for you as owner and applicant. And then, I'll leave it to Larry Beals to explain the order.
Good evening. I, I was told to be brief, so, we, we don't have much of a presentation, I will run through it, and then we'll stay all night if you have questions and comments, but we'll get through this pretty quickly. Okay, so what, what I really want to do is orient you to the site, let you know what we're trying to accomplish and, and the scope of the project. So this is an aerial view for orientation, Town Hall is right here on the, on the right-hand side, fire station across the street, China Sky, and this, the site that is currently in front of the Conservation Commission is generally this property. And during the discussions, we've been made aware of the Aborigonna Initiative, and what we're suggesting and proposing tonight is to work this edge of the pond, right? It, it's a pond that has been changed and modified and fortified and revamped a number of times over the years, and currently it's choked with invasives, and from time to time it is mulched with mulch, I believe, from the transfer station that eventually washes back into the pond and it's replaced. So, the whole theme here is to improve the ecology of that edge, and it's, it's long overdue, and that's what we're proposing to do. So, getting an overhead view, I'll, I'll reorient you, this is Mount Vernon Street on the right-hand side, the pond is, is along this edge, so that's all Mill Pond, China Sky is here, and this shows the proposed development on the Ten Converse property that's currently being reviewed by the Conservation Commission. And the proposal that we're here to discuss with you tonight is everything that's shown in this lighter green, and it basically extends from the Mount Vernon Street Bridge down to the Center Falls Bridge, where Main Street crosses the Aborigonna. And this is, is a landscape architecture plan that is showing the treatment of the edge of the pond, and what is currently being proposed, and we're not asking you to approve what's being proposed, that's the job of the Conservation Commission, but the pond edge will be planted with a seed mix and shrub plantings to follow the recommendations of the Aborigonna Initiative. And these are all. And these are all native species that have been selected by the landscape architect, they're shown up here. Uh, but they're, they're native species, they're in, they're the types of plants that would grow on this pond edge if it were, uh, a natural pond. Uh, so we think it's a good recommendation. Um, the town owns that property and that's what brings us here. Is we cannot file without your permission or without your signature on the application. And that application, uh, included this page, uh, which shows that, uh, before we can file anything with the commission. Uh, it requires a signature of the applicant, the owner and the representative. And I think what we would propose, subject to your approval, is the town would be the applicant, uh, the town would, is the owner and. Uh, we're happy to be the representative who is responsible for putting together the plans and making the application. We're also assuming that before anything gets filed, it would have to be approved by the Engineering Department and, and any other town agency that has any input into that. So, uh, my promise to be brief brings me to the last slide, uh, just to thank you for the time. And this is a view of the pond from the Center Falls Dam and the edge that we're talking about restoring is on the right-hand side. Between the park, or excuse me, the left-hand side, uh, between the parking lot and the edge of the water. So that concludes our presentation and we're happy to discuss anything or answer any questions anyone may have.
I have three questions. Um, is there significant regrading of the bank, embankment required? Um, is there maintenance required after the plant is replaced and the seeds placed and whose responsibility is it to maintain it?
I thought you said three.
It was a three.
Okay. Okay, so grading, we're, we're not proposing any grading, um, that, that would be vetted by the Conservation Commission. I, I think the bank right now is stable, uh, what is problematic are the plants that are growing on it. So to the extent that we can leave the bank as is and replant it and use those plants to anchor the soil in place, I, I think is what we'd like to propose. Um, your second question was.
Uh, you know, what type of maintenance is going to be required for the?
You know, if, if it's done properly, uh, very little maintenance, uh, but, uh, the maintenance here is you want to ensure that whatever gets planted survives and flourishes and. Um, what I would envision as maintenance is making sure that those plants grow and are viable with no mortality. And, uh, if invasives, which inevitably do come back in, uh, they would be harvested and removed and, and. The, the goal is to maintain, uh, the indigenous, uh, plants along that pond edge. And then the, um, last question was the cost, there's not a big cost to this. Uh, what we were going to recommend is that the owner of the property be responsible for all the maintenance and the costs associated with a period of like ten years.
Other questions? Anyone?
Have we seen any, um, erosion along the bank here as well that we would be worried about, like, um, you know, some of these smaller, um, trees that are there tubes, you know, that, as they're growing, pushing out? If we're disturbing some of the, um.
Sure.
The bank.
So you see all these large trees?
Yep.
Um, they're on town-owned property, so they're under your, uh, authority. This white pine here bothers me because you can see it's leaning and it's only a matter of time before that creates a nice bridge over to Sandy's Island. Um, I, I think if I were being proactive, I'd want to take that out before it does fall. Uh, there is a large willow tree there that is a spectacular tree, I would recommend leaving that. And then the other trees up here, interestingly, uh, there's a, a few, uh, pitch pine. And this is not the environment where you, you know, you would find pitch pine growing on the sand plains on Cape Cod. For some reason, they're growing there, they're not high-value trees, um, we're not proposing to remove any trees. Uh, however, there, there are better trees that could be planted there, so we would be open, uh, to that discussion. Um, and I think you had another question, Michael.
No, that, that was really it, I mean, you know, the erosion, uh, the risk there, you know, along the bank.
So the only erosion right now, uh, we're going to mitigate it to a great extent because there is no stormwater management on this site right now. It was developed years ago, this parking lot, uh, has what's called sheet flow that, that flows across the parking lot. It sort of meanders down, it crosses and then goes down the embankment there. So if you were to look at that site right now, uh, it does erode there because the erosion's uncontrolled. What we're proposing to do on that site is catch a lot of the runoff on the roof, uh, catch a lot of the runoff on the property and infiltrate it. And store it, uh, below grade before it is discharged. Uh, so we would control, we would remove that erosive force from that embankment. And, and unfortunately, right now, the only material added to that embankment is mulch. And mulch is highly erodible on a, on a steep slope next to a pond, so, um, we would fix that problem as well by not using mulch.
Anyone else? Okay. So I guess for me, I guess I would want to have Town Council weigh in just on, you know, the legal ramifications of filing such a notice, uh, to the town and how it could affect things. I know Jay couldn't be here tonight, um. I don't know. I guess if, if there's something that's filed, is that mean where it's in perpetuity, that that's how, 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 uh, things need to be in that area?
So what we would do is put together a notice of intent that gets reviewed and approved by you and the town. And if it meets your approval, we would file that, uh, with the Conservation Commission. And then the Conservation Commission would either approve or, or deny it. Um, you forever will own that land and as the landowner, you can do with it as you wish. So the, the two controlling entities of that strip of land that we're proposing to work on, uh, one is the town and the other is the Conservation Commission. So if for some reason, um. People decided that that was, that, that had run its course, there was no longer any need to, to re-vegetate. And the town wanted to go in a different direction, you could, uh, change that. You could file a new plan with the Conservation Commission to modify it or you could do nothing. So it doesn't, we're not looking for conservation restrictions or easements or, or anything like that. We're just simply suggesting that we'll put together an application on behalf of the town to file with the commission for approval.
We have already, right?
Well, we have a draft, yeah.
Yeah, we have the draft with Town Manager.
Okay. And the legal hasn't weighed in on that yet.
So I guess my question is, do you, is there anything that you're proposing as part of this N O I that would fulfill a requirement under the Riverfront Protection Act or the Wellands Protection Act? For the work that you're doing on the remainder of the Ten Converse Place property that could in perpetuity restrict the use of the town property, the ability to change it on the town property?
Well, uh, this, this is what's called mitigation and.
So you're, that's, I guess that's the question, so you're using this, this proposed changes on the town property as mitigation?
We, we don't believe that we need it.
Okay.
Uh, we don't believe that we need the mitigation, people will give you a different opinion on that. Uh, believe it or not, we think it's the right thing to do because, um, Admiral Laurie is investing a ton of money in that property. And right now, it, it, it will be beautifully landscaped, beautifully constructed and we're on this kind of rough edge of invasive plants. And, um, we've had this discussion a number of times that. There, there's a lot of things that we could do to improve that pond and, um, and we've put that in writing to the commission. That, that at our expense, we will prepare the applications and file it subject to approval by the town. I guess if you're proposing mitigation, who cares what it satisfies, it's, it's mitigation by its very nature is an improvement of that, so. Um, if we get credit for it, that's great, if we don't get credit for it, we'll still, still do it, or, or we'd like to still do it.
Right, and I think you remember this actually, just historically, this goes back to the very beginning of the project. So we had always looked at our landscaping and you guys have seen this for years, we had always looked at landscaping as a totality. Never said, well, this is yours, this is ours, but now that we're, you know, in the final moments, it, we need to officially. We had said a year ago, we need to come to you to do this, uh, and so we've, you know, it's time for us to do that.
Yeah, no, I think just the.
At the end of the Conservation Commission.
Question would be, is that if it is, and I think this is really a question for council, if it is part of your required mitigation, does it, it would have to be maintained in perpetuity, which would?
Maintenance, you know, again, we're happy to answer. We haven't, some of the questions, we haven't filed the notice yet, so we're hoping to file the notice. And then with notice filed, I'm sure in public session, the Conservation Commission will have questions of us and the town as a result. But this has always been a part of our plan, this was not new.
I mean, I would be comfortable, you know, um, approving, um, this conditional on Town, Town Council review and if, if Town Council has red flags, then we can, um, come back here at our next meeting. But, um, it seems like we did have this conversation a year ago and, um, and I think you even, um, educated us. On the Aborigon Initiative a little bit as well, which was, which was nice, I think you guys have really, um, dug in there, so, uh, we appreciate it. So, I mean, I'd, I'd be happy to move it forward, um, unless there are objections, um, and just make that conditional on, uh, Town Council approval.
There's, anyone?
I know that this is still with Conservation Commission, I don't know if we need to wait for that.
It goes back to them, right?
Yes. So what is, where are you, there in the decision, deliberating phase?
This, this is a totally separate project, so we have a notice of intent filed for the Ten Converse property. And this would be filed, uh, separately, it has to be separate because it's a separate ownership.
Okay. I guess I'm just curious. On the timing of this, you know, why? Why now?
Uh, good, perfectly good question, perfectly good question, we had always looked at this as a single tapestry, you've seen the drawings going back, way back. Um, and then, uh, actually, the Aborigon Initiative was, I believe, a, a, we learned about it long after the fact of having put ours. Now, we would always normally, we would do these kinds of plants, this is what you do in that environment anyway. So frankly, it's not a big change for us, we had filed with the Conservation Commission. And we thought we would have feedback so that we could tune this notice, which frankly is really kind of a subset of the big notice. But we hadn't had the feedback and they're at the end of their deliberation and they indicated that they would feel better. If we had finalized or at least approached the Select Board with regard to that, so we said, sure, happy to. We thought it was ancillary.
So ConCom's looking for our feedback on this subset, or they're, they're going to give feedback?
No, we were looking for theirs.
Okay.
Because, you know, are there any plant materials for file?
Right, 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 that's what I was, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't had that, so we thought we'd just go ahead and file.
Okay.
But it's been part of it, you know.
So I think what we're really looking for is, is, um, a, a, an opinion from this board about whether we should proceed and finalize. Notice of intent, subject to review by Town Council and review by engineering and, and anybody who wants to review it in the town. And, uh, and if this board's agreeable to that, then we'll move forward and prepare those documents and, uh, file the plans with the town. And we cannot file it until the owner, until the owner signs. And once, and if the town signs as owner, then we would file with the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
And Beth, I think you thought the primary review was legal. Given that the ConCom is going to review.
Yeah, I mean, I think from a, from an engineering perspective.
It's pretty simple.
It's, well, it's landscaping, there's no structures or you, you've pulled, at one point you had a, um, drainage outfall, but you've pulled that back, so.
So the.
And there's no change to the, to the bike way, it's just, um.
Stays where it is.
No, we, yeah, we.
Best not to touch that.
Alright, uh, so I think it is fair to say the draft you have is a, a final draft.
It can be signed, yeah.
It could be signed, so, subject to council's review, what you have is ready for signature. We aren't suggesting you need to do that in any kind of immediate way, we'd love it, we can move on, but, um, certainly review by council, certainly review by whomever, Iris Wright. We think it's fairly minimal.
Yeah, I think I'd just feel more comfortable with council, so that besides engineering, is there any other departments that need to review this? No?
I don't think so.
Okay. So subject to council's review? There's a motion to that, if somebody wants to make a motion to that, right?
Yes. So I move we, sorry, Siri's going to get up in this position. Um, I move we authorize, uh, the Town Manager, um. To sign on behalf of the town for the notice of intent for, um, Ten Converse Place, subject to Town Council's review.
Um, I would also note that, um, if this does go forward into, um, past the N O I phase into construction. That we would want to have some sort of license agreement with the property owners to carry out the construction and presumably some sort of long-term maintenance on that par, property. So you might want to incorporate that into a, into the motion as well.
Happy to, and as the town engineer knows, former town engineer knows, well, we have that with the town on all four sides. So we will be back before you in the, in the future. On other parts of our work.
Uh, great, so I move we authorize the Town Council, uh, sorry, move we authorize the Town Manager to sign on behalf of the town. Uh, for the, um, Ten Converse Place, uh, notice of intent, uh, subject to Town Council's review, um, with, uh, a license agreement. If the N O I moves forward for the area in question.
Second.
Sorry, I'm just trying to understand the motion, is that, are we preparing the documents and then we need to sign off? We have to agree, we'll see the final version, we'll sign off on it, I mean, is that what we're?
So I think it's to step process, the N O I, which we would send to Town Council to review, subject to his approval. I would be authorized to sign off on it. Should the project be approved, then there would be a license agreement that would separately be developed by Town Council. To govern the construct, they're, they're being allowed to do construction on town property and the long-term maintenance. If there was some agreement for them to take over part or all of the long-term maintenance.
And I think if I'm not mistaken, that's almost a foregone conclusion anyway, isn't it? Don't we always need a license agreement with you to work on your property?
You need some sort of agreement, yeah.
Exactly, so it's really.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't want for this motion, anybody to think this is the last step in the process and, and whatever.
Oh, it's the first, right, and then the ConCom will, ConCom will weigh in as well.
So I see David Miller from ConCom jumping up and down in the back, so, what do you have, David?
Thank you. To the director here, when they was saying, this is not at the N O I of Ten Converse Place, we're already reviewing the N O I of Ten Converse Place. This is the N O I of Town Land that's across the river, so.
So we should amend our motion to. To reflect that. So how do you identify that parcel of land?
Town on parcel along Mill Pond, between Ten Converse Place and Mill Pond.
That's good. Did you find any interest we found?
I'd love to be able to read that before Matthew signed it, not that I don't trust you, but I, I definitely want to read that before.
Read the N O I.
Right. Where, where in the.
Well, that's kind of my point.
I think, I think it's in your.
Yeah, I read, I know, I already read it, but I, but I want to see Town Council's comments on it, cause I, because I heard that we're going to be responsible for maintaining it for ten years as owner and I'm like, I don't want to maintain it for ten years.
I think he meant, he meant them as owner.
Right, but I'm the owner.
Owner of Ten Converse, sorry.
Right, so.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Owner of Ten Converse will take care of it for ten years.
Yeah.
But that wouldn't be in the N O I.
I understand that, but I just want to make sure that that's, this clearance, not some inference in that that's something different, so it has to come back before I can, you know, I'll agree to it. Not that I won't support it, I think it's a good idea and, and so forth.
Yeah. So why, why don't we, because, I mean, everything got to Town Council late, why don't we put this on our agenda for the twenty-third? Uh, and why don't we get Jay to weigh in on the N O I and we'll come back on the twenty-third and look at it. I think we're all supportive of it, I just, I'm just. I feel more comfortable with legal.
Yeah.
Looked at it and gave an opinion.
Absolutely, um, former Town Council is familiar, but I understand new. Former town council is familiar, but I understand new council needs to come up to speed.
Whoever we're using on this project. Let's do that. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Good night, happy coming here.
Thank you.
Do I need to do anything with that or?
No, we'll take care of it. And necessarily, if town council doesn't have any issues with it, I don't necessarily think you need to be here on the 23rd, so.
That is known.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it, guys.
All right, next up, we have our outdoor dining policy review. So everyone had a chance to review the license for outdoor dining. This is basically our old, the agreement we used for the last two years, right, or so, I think? Yes. Patty says yes. The last two years. So I think, you know, obviously, outdoor dining has been a welcome part of the community. I think residents and people that visit Winchester really enjoy it. You know, I think we've gotten some feedback from businesses this year. I don't know if all of you have heard from businesses, but I've certainly gotten some feedback. I see Ben Albianni here from the Chamber, President of the Chamber of Commerce is here. So I know the Chamber has probably received some feedback as well from businesses. The two items that I've heard the most about are the duration of the season and then what, you know, that, the amount of the amount we charge per space. You know, I think, you know, I heard two hours before this meeting from one retailer that she, she wants the ability to be able to, you know, rent a space to sell, you know, goods from her store. And they don't have that ability and tried to explain that, you know, you could always apply for a one-day license to sell. And she said, no, I want a season where I can, you know, sell things. So I think, I don't necessarily know if that's accurate. You know, if they really want that or if they're just frustrated that they feel like, you know, prime spots in front of their stores or in the area might be taken up. So I think, you know, as we look at this, you know, this is the outdoor application. So the way this works is we put this out, the restaurants then apply, they submit their plans, right, Beth? And then we come back and we, you know, make sure that, you know, we have enough. We look at the plan, overall plan, and we approve the overall plan. So the first highlight area that Beth has here is the term. So we, last season was March 15th, 2022 to November 15th, 2022. Like I said, I think a lot of the comments that I've heard centered around the season was too long. I don't know if there's any appetite to amend that. You know, making it a little shorter, whether it's April 15th, May 1st, and then, you know, ending with Halloween. I think there was actually some confusion amongst the, the restaurant, restaurants themselves. I think some thought it ended October 31st and had their stuff up on October 31st versus November 15th, where some left it out there. So I think that's the first area that maybe, you know, some type of concession for these, these retailers that have, you know, voiced their opinion, you know, certainly to the Chamber, to myself. I don't know if you're on those emails as well. But that may be one concession that we could do is shorten the season. I'm not sure if the staff has any, any thoughts on that or anything as well.
Yeah, I don't have a specific date of recommendation. I, March 15th feels a little early to me, given the weather.
Can we phone a friend? Ask Phil? Sure. What do you think?
I mean, to be honest with you, I think March 15th kind of became something to help the Irish pubs, I'm not in the Irish pub business. So I can't speak to that, but I think it is kind of early. I'd rather, if we're gonna tighten the schedule, I think we should do it on the front end rather than in those later months. I think November 15th has proven to be a date when the weather's still pretty good, people want to sit outside. You know, the thing about operating Winchester is the summer is kind of a slow season in town. People go on the Cape and to the islands and to Maine and the nature. So, you know, those shoulder seasons are kind of important for us. I, I would be happy to see, you know, maybe April 15th or November 15th or even maybe first. You know, I just hope that's where going to, you know, I, I know there's an advisory right now for our people to start wearing masks again. I think, you know, we, we assume that this is over, but the restaurant business is still finding issues related to the coronavirus and the pandemic. So we still need this and I think the town would be a leader in making this a somewhat problematic thing. And I applaud you guys for having that foresight. But, but yeah, I think, I think what we're doing was, are, you know, pretty valid, viable.
Yeah, Ben, you're the only two people here, so.
I don't need to be sitting down in the grass here, Phil. You know, we, we get, we get, from the Chamber, we get both sides. But there are restaurants that are part of the Chamber and then we have retailers that are losing spaces because. So we really, both ends of the, both ends of the game. And I would, I would take, you know, Phil's recommendation myself. I can't speak on behalf of the whole, whole Chamber. But, you know, if that's what a restaurateur says, then, you know, the later, starting a little bit later, but ending around the same time, I think is, is, is good. I think that's, gives the, gives the store owner the little, the extra time in the spring and it gives the restaurants the time that they're looking for in the fall, so.
I mean, I know, I know people who are still eating outside in the, in the dead of winter, frankly. And it definitely appreciate kind of continuing into November. Looking at it, you know, kind of taking the sort of COVID piece out. Sort of April 15th makes sense to, to shift. I think May 1st, you know, we have ANCA like the next weekend, right? So May, May 1st seems like we could probably start a little bit earlier than that. People would have an appetite for being out. Not intended, but it was good, for, for being out a little bit earlier, just to, you know, kind of get things going prior to like warm, warm weather. To that note, I know, you know, earlier this fall, we talked about the parking space on, at the corner of Thompson and Waterfield. And I do wonder, you know, do we also start to think about, are there some other spots where we can do 15-minute spaces? So that businesses who are sort of that quick drop in.
So they do exist in town. There's a couple. There's one by Alina's. There's one around the corner from La Chia's. There's one, I think, in front of Carmelo's, maybe? There's a half-hour parking there.
I think it's half-hour there, yeah.
I think when Lisa was town manager, I think in, in COVID, there was a, there, when the takeout spots went away, there was a concerted effort to try to spread them around areas where, with high takeout restaurants. So, so there are a couple that exist now. Whether we need more, I think that's, you know, something we could consider down the road. I know Jim Covino was asked to make his 15-minute spot in front of his restaurant, for restaurant, for food takeout, whatever the sign language is that we have in front of Alina's, to have that sign language in front of his, his spot. So certainly, I mean, that's something we need to agenda out and I think.
Yeah, just kind of a, you know, consideration as we're losing probably 10 or so more than that spots in the center.
Yeah, but I think if you talk to the retailers in the center, they don't want.
To lose the spot.
They don't, they don't wanna lose, they, they don't want shorter-duration spots. They like the one-hour. At least that's the feedback I've received. I mean, I inadolely told people that we were thinking about going, you know, that we had a study done and that, you know, 30-minute parking was, you know, was what the engineers were recommending. And that's it off, you know, alarm bells, so. You know, just, I think it's something that we're gonna look into this, this winter anyways. Cause we do have that study out there that we really haven't acted on, the Downtown Action Initiative, so. So getting back to this, is everyone comfortable with April 15th and November 20th, no, November 15th, 2023?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I'll just say, I mean, this is, you know, a fluid process and we've made a lot of changes over the past couple of years. And I think we've made some progress and April 15th seems a little bit late to me. I mean, just pushing it off that length of time. Because what I've noticed as well, and I know, you know, Phil, you guys do a lot to kind of do a build-out on the street there and get. I mean, that takes time as well, right? Bringing things in. Most of the restaurants are now have actual just structures that are in place with, you know, that take assembly and carpenters. And so it's not just, you know, sitting in the road like it was initially. So, you know, it, you know, getting that going in a time to get it open for a weekend. You know, I guess if we're pushing it from March 15th, you know, I guess I'd, I'd rather see it at the, at the beginning of April to give some, some lead-up time, but that would just be my only preference, so. But I, I, I thought we were, we were doing March 15th, so it seems, seems late to push it off. And I think it's been just enormously successful as well for the retailers as well as the restaurants. I think it's just brought a lot of people to the town center, so.
If I make, uh, one consideration for the retailers that, that, this is the only municipal that we operate in where the size of the patios hasn't really been affected by, you know, a, a change over time. In the, in the North End, in, for example, like, you only have in front of your storefront, which reflects the size of the restaurant, the size of the staff, the size of the kitchen. Here, everybody was given a rather large patio. And it's sometimes are, are open in, in front of other businesses, which I think is kind of problematic in places. But I think that might be a concession to make. Obviously, La Chia's is a pretty big storefront, so my eyes is on the table, but just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't thinking that. I mean, I think, you know, Winchester's, we have some funky buildings downtown with, you know, limited storefronts. So I was, I was along the lines that, you know, I think it says it in here, you can have up to three spots and then consider anything else on a case-by-case basis. So I wasn't inclined to change that. Again, the feedback I've received from, it's gotta be seven or eight downtown center businesses is, you know, they felt the period was too long. So, I mean, I think even if we started April 15th, I mean, I think, you know, it takes, you know, three or four days max to get these, these places up and running. I think we had one business that spread it out over a month. I don't know if they ever really got up and running.
And it'll have an up and running rate in time for April vacation, so, you know, into May and then.
A lot of it on the other side of the street too, which is very interesting.
So, I mean, I, I'm comfortable with April 15th. And I think it just sends a message to the retailers, cause I have heard, what is April 15th?
April 15th is a Saturday. I, I mean, could we say the 14th, but that the spaces go offline on the 10th?
Yeah, that's fine. Looking at the calendar, so that they're open for the 15th, that weekend. That, that, that's a marathon, Monday, the 17th, right? Yeah.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, that is right at school vacation.
So April 10th, we would start blocking off, allow setup? It's fine.
That seems like a good compromise, yes.
Okay.
To November 15th?
Yeah. To November 15th, a Wednesday. Actually, the week before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, we'll give them the, the week, the weekend of, which is a long weekend of.
The 12, yeah.
Veterans Day.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, what's like feasible, more feasible on Monday, then Monday you have.
Yep.
This is weekend, last weekend, all that more, but then Wednesday is a good question for me.
All right, so we'll do that. And then the next was bullet point four, or paragraph four license fee. So I brought this up last year. I don't think the board went for it, but I'm gonna bring it up again. You know, I think $500 per parking spot for what, what revenue it generates is, is a little low. And I'd like to see what other, I know Boston's high, but I mean, I don't know what other comparable towns do. I think it really spans the gamut. But to that end, if there's any way that, you know, what we charge for these spots could be kind of earmarked, maybe we have to go to town meeting for this, I'm not sure. But to kind of put back into the center for the businesses, specifically the retailers or something, whether it's used for promotional use or, and I don't know what legally we can do. But to, to study, Beth, maybe how those funds could be, you know, put back, whether it's beautification projects, window cleaning, I have no idea, but just something that kind of goes back so they feel like they're getting something.
Yeah, they'll reap benefits from it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think that's good.
I personally would like to see at least a fee of $1,000 parking spot. I mean, I think, I think that's what I proposed last year. I can't remember. Maybe 1,500 last year. But I mean, I think, you know, we have these, you know, restaurants that, you know, the exception of Phil's, I think, really almost double, you know, 50% more capacity at the, so. And, you know, even when they're full outside, they've, I've seen, you know, over the last summer and they're pretty full inside as well. So I think that would go a long way to, you know, giving some benefit to retailers down there that, you know, if they saw that there was, you know, more than just a nominal fee and that that money was being put back into something that benefits them, I think that would help. And, and again, I don't know what legally we can do with that money, but I think we could, you know, get creative and think of a way to, so that they benefit from it. So I would propose $1,000 a space this year. And it's, I think it's up to three.
If we do sort of a increase in, I, I actually, I'm just sort of guessing based on what I remember. I don't know how many restaurants are doing outdoor dining and how many spaces they're, they're using. I don't know if we were to say it's this for the first.
It's usually 12.
12.
It's usually 12, 12, I mean, at least, no, it's 15 spots. Five restaurants, three spots each, right?
Yeah, I think, I, I have, I don't remember off the top of my head.
I thought, I wanna say 18 spots, but no, it was 15 spots. This is out here right. So this would be a thousand bucks, that's $15,000 that the town would, would get and maybe put that to use to benefit the businesses. Like I said, I think they generate revenue. I mean, I've, I mean, whether it's lunch or, or dinner, it's a great thing for our community, but it's also in recognition that, you know, restaurants should take money off of it.
So what I'm trying to win Lexington and Belmont charge?
Lexington doesn't have it. They just have sidewalks. They have the giant sidewalks.
Belmont closed down the whole Leonard to.
Yeah.
Close, close down Leonard Street in the summertime to traffic.
To make it one-way.
Well, yeah, right.
First, first year was one-way and then last year it was, um, they just narrowed the street and they made it two-way, but there wasn't charter fee.
What's your fee, Patty, do you know?
Yeah, I don't know what the fee was.
What's Boston, what do you get charged in Boston? Seven grand?
Boston's free except for the North End, which is 500 a spot per month.
Per month. So this would be, we charged 500 for the whole season last year per spot.
And I, I don't think anybody would really have a problem with that. The one thing I would ask maybe as a concession to restaurants is like, if there's some, in the D P W R, in town where we could store our barriers over, over the winter and I'm afraid of costs of, of that, I think people would be happy to make that exchange. Something we've been talking about for three years, but it really never came to fruition.
Do we, I mean, we can resource that. I think we've been to research that for three years.
Yeah, if we, if we were 500, I mean, I'm just very incremental about this and just wanna make sure that the restaurants are, you know, prepared and, and not saying, oh, well, you know, the extra fees are, you know, causing me to make decisions about it. If we go from 500 to 1,000 this year and then we, if we go to 1,500 next year, I think that's fine. But I think that your idea is an excellent one to keep the money in the town center. It's kind of what the Town Day Committee does as well. If they're generating revenue from Town Day, their objective is to keep the money to an improvement project right in the town center. If they're generating revenue from Town Day, um, their, um, objective is to keep the money to an improvement project right in the town center. And so, um, I think that is a, is a great idea. So I'm not sure how we would do it. I know we have the park meter fund that we could do it, but that's, we need town meeting approval to, to, to kick that money out. Um, and I think it's only for that area around the commons, so.
I don't think there's any way we can do it without having to go to town meeting to appropriate since it's a general fund receipt, but I can talk to Stacy.
Yeah, we may need to go to town meeting to do it.
Unless we just do it in cash. I mean, and we just, you know, then we just.
Time out me too.
Just keep it in a, a pocket in town hall and then just use it.
So are you okay with a thousand dollars or do you wanna?
I would say a thousand dollars this year and then just putting everyone on notice that we're looking to increase it next year as well, right? So the next season, so, um, that would, that would be my preference.
Right. So change paragraph four to a thousand dollars and then. And I think, what else is in here, Sharon?
So the one thing I added that's new from the policy previously is, um, section H on the bottom of page two. So I added that once installation starts, businesses have two weeks to complete installation of the barriers, canopies, et cetera, and fully occupy the space to the town's satisfaction. The town reserves the right to rescind approval of the outdoor dining application if the work cannot be completed within the required timeframe. So I think.
Yeah.
Some of the, in the past years, some of the installation has dragged out for a while, which it's not fair to be occupying parking spaces, but it's not actually being used for outdoor dining. Two weeks seems like a reasonable timeframe to get everything together. I know, like you said, some people are hiring con- uh, carpenters to kind of set up flooring and that type of thing, but.
So once they start, so if, if, if I pull this and I say, I don't wanna start till May first, I have two weeks to when I, to when I start, okay?
Yeah. Once they start, the first physical barrier goes into the street.
That's one change we've heard a lot of coming forward is that everybody's gonna have to have a platform. If somebody in town wants to see just for handicap purposes, um, to make a platform so it's easy with the side door.
So I think you have to have ADA accessibility to at least some part of your outdoor dining facility. And then the, the bigger concern that we've had in other areas is, is making sure it doesn't impact the ADA capacity of our sidewalks, right? That it doesn't, um, you know, we have to have a three-foot clear distance. So, um, I think, you know, cer- several people did have platforms. I think that, that worked. So I think that's kind of, to you guys, but it, it certainly helps with the ADA compliance issue.
A platform's nice. And, and I'll say, I think our restaurants do a great job. You know, they've gotten, they've only gotten better over the years, right? With, uh, with their setups and stuff, so. All right, I think that's it. Is that, anyone else have any other changes to this or is this, is everyone okay with this? So what would happen now is, um, staff would get this fine-tuned. This would go out to all the, all the business, all the, um, restaurants. Uh, they would then have the opportunity to apply. We would get those applications. We come back before the board and we kind of just make sure, you know, we didn't have, you know, just make sure the plan fits with what we, we envisioned and then go from there. All right, so.
Question for you. How does that continue to go so that the funds that are raised are allocated? Is that something you guys will do?
We'll do that on our, yeah.
That's a town meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that internally, um, and figure it out. We need to talk to Stacy and figure out a plan. But I think everyone's in agreement that that, those, that's where the funds should be earmarked to some type of.
That would be, that would be a good sell to the retail stores to be able to say that the funds that are being raised are going to help us find ways. I think that would be a huge, huge help to the businesses going forward to know that that's, that that was something that's gonna be brought to.
So you want us to vote on this, Beth?
Um, either you can vote it tonight or I can kind of make the changes and bring it back to the twenty-third so that you'll have a kind of clean draft to.
We probably want to get this out to people.
Vote it. I mean, it's only a couple of changes.
The only thing I don't know is what the, I need to speak with some folks here in, uh, the town mayor's office. We wanna make the application deadline, so I don't have that date to fill in, but you could vote subject to that being worked out.
Subject to your discretion.
Yeah.
Um, Beth, on, uh, page four.
Yep.
It discusses, um, Governor Baker's order, COVID nineteen number thirty-five, which goes through April first, twenty-twenty-three. Is there an update?
I have not heard. So this, this is the license agreement that, um, the applicant will enter into with the town once we approve it. Um, and I did have town council review this and, and he's the one who updated that April first, twenty-three, so I don't think it's been extended.
But what my understanding is that all our restaurants are now in compliance. They've all.
Right, the, the, last year we were under the gun with the ABCC requirement, but that's kind of changed this year. So that gives us a little bit more flexibility. Last year we were doing this like in December because we had to meet that ABCC requirement.
So I don't think Governor, so Governor Baker's order doesn't, nah, right, at this point. We'll leave it in there. Okay. All right, so let's vote it and Beth can make those changes. We can get it out to businesses.
Yep, I move we approve the twenty-twenty-three outdoor dining policy, um, subject to the, the changes discussed tonight.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, um, comptroller vacation carry forward and payment requests. Thanks guys for coming. So we've got a memo from Stacy on this. Find it.
So last, last page in a second.
How do I have it? Oh, here it is. So this is something we, we've typically done in the past. Am I correct about this? Mike, maybe you know?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, this, this is what we do. I mean, I, I, I think, you know, we've, um, hopefully got to, um, move towards finding a way around this, um, at some point. It's not the compensation level. It's, um, uh, but especially for our comptroller, um, we, you know, we, um, need her to be, um, taking some vacation. So, um, so it's, uh, certainly all of our employees, we don't want them to get the feeling that, um, they're expected to work beyond, um, what their, their contracted time is, so. Um, but certainly we, uh, we owe this to the comptroller at this point.
Any issues with this?
None.
All right, is there a motion?
I move we approve the vacation carry forward payout request to buy back seventy-eight hours for Stacy Warren.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. All right, next up, uh, we've got two appointments, it looks like. Uh, anyone have any issues with these appointments? Any discussion? Hearing none? Motion?
Uh, I move we, um, reappoint Mary Grassi to the Design Review Committee for the term to expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next.
I move we appoint Peter Pongrats to WinCam for, or reappoint Peter Pongrats to WinCram for the term to expire Nov- uh, November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have a consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none?
I move we approve the consent agenda, um, as posted on Monday, January ninth agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Isn't that's everything, right, Beth?
I think so.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Uh, I know staff is working on our, uh, requests after the budget meeting we had on Saturday. Um, and it's looking to get us a model of what a balanced budget would look like if we didn't use free cash. I know the school committee, I think it's meeting tomorrow, and I know, um, our staff has had, you know, started dialogues with Dr. Hackett and, and how that would look. So we're gonna look, keep working on that, uh, and then hopefully reconvene in the next, um, couple of weeks and figure out that budget process. I know it might be painful, but I think it's something necessary. We need to at least look at, uh, going forward, so. I hope Beth, if you had anything on that or what's up. Great. All right, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you, WinCam.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.